Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. It is six thirty on November twenty-fourth, two thousand and fourteen. I'm calling the Grantville City Council into session. Mr. Mallory?
My sir.
Would you be so kind?
I will. Put that through the transcription of Spanish. We're going to go over it. We're going to talk to this guy. He's probably in the office. Might be the same student who's come up to call the county. He must be desperate, calling the county. He's back to the U.S. Conference. So this is probably like the mayor, the president giving away the license, maybe the company, maybe the government, you know, he's like, we'll work out the schedule. I think he's, I don't know if he's like our boss or mayor of council, so he's coming in and criticizing. But the president wants to be fine and play some games.
May I remain standing?
I pledge allegiance to the Bible, to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any concerns or additions to the agenda as published?
I'd like to add one item for, I guess it would be new business or old business, is the contract with the city manager for the chief of police.
I'd like to make a motion.
Let me, I want to hear it, but let me write this down, and I'm going to put that under new business. Chief, chief of police contract. Hold on one second.
He said city manager.
No, I said, I meant chief.
He said chief.
I meant chief.
Oh, poppy, you first did not say.
I did.
Okay. Well, I have a question.
Chief of police.
Okay, the chief of police contract.
That's right.
Of course. All right, Ms. Riley?
I also want to make a motion to also put out there for advertisement immediately, so we can get some ball rolling on the city manager.
Ah, okay, I don't, I don't think we need that on the agenda. We can instruct you to advertise for, for the city manager.
That's, we won't need that on the agenda, is that okay? That's fine, as long as, as long as we can get something rolling.
He's, he's got his program.
Okay.
Take care of the ball. Okay. Any, any, let me add one, to discuss and possibly vote on the intergovernmental agreement with the county to put walking trails around the ball fields. Put that under new business. Anything further? Any objections to what we've discussed? Okay, can I have a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Okay, approval of minutes, we have one. The last council meeting on November tenth. Concerns about the minutes as published. Motion to accept?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? All right, we go right to public speaker, speakers. Ms. Shelley Smith with the GED update and request.
Name Shelley Smith, I probably heard twelve oh two, where my brain, probably brain was, just three zero two two zero. I'm here tonight to give you an update on the GED program and give a request. This is from the building.
Shelley, could you pull that mic down, please, so we get you on the recorder? Just bend it towards you. There you go.
It's been a very successful year. We're moving forward. I do want to show my appreciation to the mayor for the last four years, giving at least five scholarships, helping people to pay for their GED. I do want to thank him for the last year for the building that he has so gracefully donated the space electricity for classes, because we needed the internet and the internet Wi-Fi. I want to thank Mr. Gomez for his ten dollars that he gave the student who needed it along with mine to retake her test. She is still studying for that test, so we, she's ready now, and so we predict that she will pass it before the end of the year. I want to thank Mr. Riley for his copier. I want to thank Mr. Lundey and Mr. Cooks for all their encouragement in, of the GED program. It has made a difference in this community. I feel like since the last time I was here, we'd had one person to complete the test, and he has his GED. We have another one that took his social studies test. He's passed the social studies in the language test, and I was so excited, and I, he passed the social studies test, I accidentally ran out of the store to get Mary to tell her, and the police happened to be there. So I have to contain my excitement. They were there because the pharmacy alarm went off, and they wanted to make sure that, you know, somebody wasn't breaking in. I think that was just something that happened, but, you know, they said, that's fine, be excited. I think we need to be excited about the success that we are having in our city, and this is one thing to be proud of. That person will now need to take his science and his math test, and if you, anybody wants to donate scholarships or, or sponsor somebody, that's open. Those tests are forty dollars apiece. The whole test would be a hundred and sixty dollars. We have other people that wouldn't, want to take the test, do not have the funds, so keep that in mind. It is a time of giving, so if you want to help somebody get ahead, please do. So I have talked to West Georgia Tech. We, I'm on advisory committee with them. They are willing to let us, they said plug into them, they're willing to come talk to the city council if we have a permanent site, so we need a permanent site, and that's the request that I have, that we look forward for a permanent site for the class, so that we can set it up like they do at West Georgia Tech, that when I will have to, or the class will have to follow their rules, which includes giving their test, you know, their hours and all. And one, one thing that would help us is, right now, the sixteen and seventeen-year-olds that come to class do not get any hours, because I'm not a state appro, we're not a state-approved program in Grantville. If we're a state-approved program, those sixteen and seventeen-year-olds have to have forty hours of class time in order to be able to take the test, and I'm having to send them to Hogansville in Newton, and we're losing them. The one that I just sent to Hogansville had, let his license expire, and he had to get the rest of his forty hours. He had gone to Newton, and it was too far to keep going. His daddy was working out of town, so I sent him to Hogansville. He was driving in Grantville without an expired license. He got locked up. Now, we don't want that to happen. We want to help our youth here, so we need to look at what we can do. I want to thank the Better Hometown and the DVA for the funds, for the computers. That helps, because what we're doing is on computers, but we need to look at the career centers, so that we can have not only the GED classes, but also help these people with employment after they get their GED and to continue to go to school. But then, all that, a lot of what we do now is on computer, you know, that will leave Wi-Fi for that. Now, I went to talk, Westmoreland's office today, they will endorse any kind of grants that we apply for, so we need to look at a grant upon this. We need to be, move forward, we need to have a budget, we need to look, really sit down and look at what we can do and move forward with this career center, which will include GED class, the jobs, and continuing education. We could also help any students in the community with their homework, because some students don't have a, a computer, they don't need something printed off, and they don't have that access, and we don't let them drop out of school, because they don't have what they need. As a community, we need to come together and help, and I want to appreciate your time and consideration, Mr. Knight. Thank you so much for letting me come.
Don't, don't run off, Shelley. How many square feet do you need?
I don't have to get that information for me.
Put, get some specifics on paper.
Okay.
And, and bring it, bring it to the city clerks.
Okay.
And let's get copies for all the council members and for Ms., Mr. Garcia.
Now, do you want the person in charge of the GED program, Karen Hurst, to come to the city council meeting and talk?
Well, it, it needs, we need to have a meeting prior to that.
Okay.
Let's, let's set up a meeting, and let's get your specifics down. Here's the thing, we're, we're all grateful to have helped you, and what, all we've done is given you some seats, and, and you have done a fantastic job of running with this and helping these citizens, so we, we need to know specifically what you, what you need, and, and get it all on paper, so we have something concrete we can look at. And, you know, you're, you're a volunteer asset that we, we need to keep funding.
Well, I'd like to have a phone call, so we can move forward.
Is this, and you handed us this brochure. Do you want to highlight that?
Well, that just goes over the GED program. I don't know how much of it you really understand or know, but this gives you information on it, and if you look on the back, it talks about how many people will benefit from having their GED. In nineteen forty-two, they opened the doors to the GED program. How many of you knew that's how long it's been going on? But now, it's computerized, because not only are they giving the test for people to pass it, but they're trying to, the test is geared to teach them job-ready skills, and that's what we need to do. We need to get our young people in and older people, too, job-ready. There is a gentleman that called me, he's forty-nine, that just moved to Grantville. He's surprised we don't have a bed right here. I said, we don't need one, but he does need his GED. He will be coming to pass tomorrow, so we need to look at that. We have people constantly moving in and calling.
Are you getting, are you getting any volunteer help at all to help you with your program?
Um.
Anybody coming in?
My sister.
Yes, his sister is an asset. A few more people have, you know, here and there, but his sister has been very helpful and very supportive, the cheerleader for the class, because she has gotten a lot of people. And Lyndon Dean had helped in the beginning, and she's back encouraging people to come.
I'm just wondering if any, maybe teachers that live locally and still in this area, and just being able to have a few hours to help people.
Yeah, if they would, especially if they want to help individuals with math or different things like that, they can take that one person aside and work together with them. Now, BEMAS did give a class on resume writing. That is something that, that they're going to need, you know, those kind of things, too, so you don't just have to come in to help somebody with that. If you've got a skill like that that you would like to bring, or you have a business that you want to promote, employ, open it up for employees from our city, young people to apply there, then come. We'll give you time to speak, I will give you time to help these young people get ahead. That's what we're looking at. We're looking at not just young people, but everybody getting ahead. This is the second chance for those that didn't have it the first time.
One question we're going to want to ask, when they say you need a, a permanent facility, I assume it can be a lease, as long as it's of a certain duration? Do you, that's one question we're going to ask.
Okay.
Because that way, we don't have to buy your property. If you, if they will accept a lease that's a certain amount of time to satisfy them?
Well, what they're saying is, it has to be a, a site, because the testing, all the information has to come to one place, it has to be a local site, they don't want to know where.
Can't work out the back of the car. So a lease, a long-term lease may, may suffice that. Ladies and gentlemen, she is accepting donations to help these young people and not-so-young people take these tests. Sometimes it's, it's money holding them back. If you go down Main Street, right next to the new pharmacy, Shelley's GED classes are there, and her sign and her phone number is there. If you want to make a donation, Shelley Smith is also in the phone book. It's, it's going, she's a good steward of your, of your donations.
And also, at the library on Saturday, we have class from twelve to one.
Twelve to one on Saturday in the library?
Yes.
That's a GED class?
Yes.
And your classes are all free and all open?
Yes.
They just have to pay for the test.
Right. And there is a practice test that costs six dollars, that they can take it before they actually go take the, the real test, to make sure they're ready. And whatever skills they're not proficient in, that test will tell, that practice test will give a printout of what they need to study, and then we can give what we're working on in class to them.
Thank you, Shelley.
Thank you, Al.
Thank you, Shelley.
Next, on the public speaker list, Mr. Ross Doctorman, city manager conduct.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Ross Doctorman, three seven nine, both end of road. Gentlemen, what brings me before you today are three events all involving city managers slash police GED. Last year, you, Mr. Mayor, made a decision that no city employee would remove any city properties for personal use. It was specifically a vehicle, if you recall. So the question is, did you approve the removal of one of the police dogs by Mr. Garcia for using his private business, did it later, on a bomb-sniffing assignment, for which Mr. Garcia, according to reports, occupied a three-thousand box? There's really a larger question. Why does Green Hill have a hiding and bomb-sniffing dog, other than to serve extracurricular purposes? Item number two. Our police department either has now or had for some time employed four reserve officers. I don't know if they're still there or not.
For what? For what? For what?
Reserve officers.
Reserve? Okay, continue, please.
Nothing wrong with that. That's standard practice, except for the fact that they were not registered with post. According to the DVA, any citations written by them could be voided. In fact, it's a sloppy word, and potentially could cost the city money if those citations are challenged by whoever gets them. Item number three. On twelve November, Mr. Garcia lost his temper and disrespectfully treated a citizen who came to ask a question.
Were you present? Were you present? Is this something that you, were you there, sir?
No.
I'd rather we didn't do hearsay. Please.
This is not hearsay, sir. The lady that.
Please, please don't raise your voice.
The lady in question is in the auditorium.
Did she ask you to speak for her?
Yes, sir.
Okay, continue, please.
He told the lady that he was so angry at her and her group, which was ruining his life. Sound familiar? Almost the same words you used just a few months ago. I think you guys are related, or he is a hell of a fast learner.
Please, please continue, but don't, don't, don't be insulted. Please continue.
On top of that, well, forget it. Being able to implicitly trust our police officers, and especially their chief, is not negotiable, and a violation of that trust cannot be tolerated by you, by me, by anybody. We can't trust our cops, we're in trouble. To begin the process of redemption, we expect the chief to issue a public apology to Mrs. Morell, made that a muffled incident, please need this person to record. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's go to unfinished business. Unsafe Structures, Mr. Tim Dean, front and center, sir.
Mr. Mayor of council, I'm Tim Dean, coming from the surface of the city of Grantville. By resolution, two structures within the city were declared unsafe and ordered to be demolished. That was on the eleventh of August, two thousand and fourteen. And in so doing, the city attorney requested that an additional ninety days be given for any interested parties to respond. Notifications were issued again by the city clerk to anyone who may be an interested party. There was no response. The only response was a verbal one from the county, and they said that they have no interest in the, in the property other than it is, in the custody of the county for paying the taxes. And actually, it would be better if the structure was gone, because it makes it more marketable piece of property. Let's just get the conversation. That's what the county said. That's what the county said. Mr. Fox. So I'm here tonight asking for permission to continue under the ordinance to request for sealed bids to have these two properties demolished.
Okay, council, have we satisfied the.
Absolutely. The, the resolution that the council adopted at that time gave the owners ninety days to demolish the property themselves, and if they didn't do that, then it clearly provided that the city would move forward and do that, so if you so choose, you're able to proceed with, with demolition.
Okay, do I have a, a motion to allow code enforcement to continue forward with a request for bids to demolish one nineteen Merryweather Street and forty-three LeGrane Street? I'm sorry? Yeah, since we still have discussion. We're, we're looking for bids. We're allowing him to continue with the process and get bids to proceed with demolition. A motion for proceeding for bids, for enforcement to call through on demolishing these two structures. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, motion and a second, to go forward with the demolition procedure for one nineteen Merryweather Street, forty-three LeGrane Street, and he'll put out a request for bids. Discussion? The one that we talked about was so small, you said it wasn't, it wasn't really anything really to knock it over?
One nineteen Merryweather. I've discussed that with Ron Bullins at Public Works, and he's aligned that the city personnel can take that building down and save considerable cost, as opposed to having a contract committee do it. The only cost to the city would then be the rental and the dumpster, and the labor for the city employees, which, the building is, is very small.
So, so basically, we can take it down ourselves with our own crew?
With our own crew.
And then haul, and then get a dump truck to haul it away, this will pay the city to pay for it. So what's the purpose of us really having a bid on such a small thing? We don't want to record it, so. Yeah, if, if you proceed with what we're saying, he can go forward if necessary. If, if, if it's, if it's dirt cheap, he, he can do it. If it's not, he can put out a bid and get the council's approval. So this, this will allow him to do whatever's necessary to continue with the process he's on to demolish these two buildings.
The ordinance requires that a request for sealed bid be published whenever there is a demolition being done by the city. If we have a project that comes in and says, okay, I'm going to do, just hypothetically, forty, or forty-three LeGrane, and I'll fill Merryweather in the same cost, and he's the lowest cost for a bid, then we would go that direction. But if it's X number of thousands of dollars more to get that smaller structure knocked down, and he can do it for, for a thousand or less with our own equipment, then we can proceed that way.
So I understand you're saying you're going to bid both of them anyway before you do anything?
Yes, sir. That way, we're covering at least half of the ordinance is covered.
Okay. Further discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second to allow Mr. Dean to move forward to get a sealed bid and demolish as necessary one nineteen Merryweather Street, forty-three LeGrane Street. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is an application for the Historic Preservation Commission. Ms. Lyndon Dean is back in town at seventy-three LeGrane Street. She's replacing Connie Indicott. Connie's term ends February tenth, two thousand and eighteen. Ms. Indicott has moved outside of Grantville, so she has, she has resigned. Her background is, her background is here, and can I have a motion to accept Ms. Lyndon Dean on the Historic Preservation Committee to finish Ms. Connie Indicott's term to February tenth, two thousand and eighteen?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor of placing Ms. Lyndon Dean on Historic Preservation Committee, replacing Ms. Connie Indicott to February tenth, two thousand and eighteen? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? All right, next is a request for funding to complete renovations to the Zara O'Kelly Auditorium. Mr. Garcia, I think that's you.
I, we received a couple bids for the work there on two extreme spectrums. I recommend that we probably wait till the beginning of the year with the new city council for them to decide. We had a bid for, for the handicap ramp from one construction company for thirty, three hundred dollars, I think, and we were able to do it with Mr. Ross for nine hundred dollars. So now we have a handicap ramp on the side, which makes the building eighty-eight percent of our weight for us, for the city public works department to build me some rails, and that part of the project will be completed. The front of the building's been remediated. We got two pieces that we have to be, that have to be rebuilt and put back up on the building to make the building historically sound like it was originally. The public works people are, are working on that, after they get their duties done, so they've been working on it little by little. So I recommend that we wait till the beginning of the year.
What's the current cost of the two contracts?
One contract is, I think, it was thirty-five thousand for the completion of everything that needs to be done on the inside of the building.
Is that quote heating and air?
No, heating and air, the quote that Tim got from somebody, who was that from?
Loyale Air.
Loyale Air was fifty-five thousand for heating and air.
Fifty-five thousand? It was twenty-four thousand two years ago.
So I spoke to another heating and air guy, and he gave me a, a complete, well, it's actually a, a construction company that does, he's a general contractor that does everything. He said he would be able to finish the project with heating and air, ductwork, electrical, everything would be done, completed for about forty-five thousand dollars.
Well, it, it's, it's definitely a process, and I think you're right. That's something the next council needs to consider. We support it, but we're not going to have time to come up with the information necessary to make a sound decision, and they can't. Continue like you're doing, what you're doing. These, these small projects are making a big difference in the appearance downtown and City Hall and the auditorium, just.
Yes, sir.
You, you have vision and imagination, and we haven't seen this since I've been mayor, and I really appreciate your hard work.
Yes, sir.
All right, so we're passing on that. Let's go to new business. Resolution changing the boundaries of downtown development authority, number four. Is someone here to present that? That would be the Downtown Development Authority.
That's right. I'm Patty Palmer, I'm chair of the Downtown Development Authority, and we passed a resolution on Tuesday that expanded our footprint to include Reeves Past, which was, which has been a business in this community since two thousand and two, and believe it or not, it is not in the footprint for the DVA. We also included the old mill, the cotton mill, the big one. And one of the reasons for that is that it has a great deal of potential for commercial development, and. And the DDA has the ability to do funding for something like that. So we like that in our footprint so something can be offered that it will enhance the property if, you know, we can do that financing.
Now, looking at the map you've given us, I'm assuming the dart in the middle is the current?
That's the current footprint. It's a rather tortured footprint. I don't know how it came about, but it doesn't include much.
You know, you've also picked up of the old City Hall, the old Masonic lock. That's not, that's not in that dark area. So that's another reason to go a little further.
Well, see, our footprint has to be contiguous, so it has to, to, you know, be all one solid thing. You can't pick up things all over the city. So that's why we've got some houses in there. We've got a few different things in there. But it can eventually be a tax district that the businesses can be taxed by the DDA. And they will supply us with funding when we get to that point. So that's another reason for it.
Council?
This is something the DDA has passed this as a request to the council. Only the city council has the authority to actually change the footprint of the DDA. The council has the authority initially to establish the DDA and set the original footprint. And if you wish to choose, wish to amend that, expand it, contract it, whatever in any way, the council has the authority to do that under state law by the adoption of a resolution. I've prepared an appropriate resolution for the council to consider. And we'll consequently take the map that I think you have as included in your notebooks and make that an exhibit to the resolution.
Let's go over the advantages again. If you, if you will be able, I tell you what, would you restate the advantages to doing this?
We can make, we can make our footprint into a tax district. It doesn't include houses, but we can make a tax, tax, tax district out of it so that the DDA can receive funding from that funding. The only funding we get is from Kidapalooza and the auto show. And now the bricks are bringing in a little bit of revenue. But in order to do loans and grants and things like that, we need our own funding coming in. The reused past section of the footprint, I mean, you can see reused past. It is a downtown business. You can see it from the railroad track. And it should have been included to begin with. And we're requesting that it does make money every once in a while. So if it ever gets to be a tax base, then we'd like money from that, too. And the large mill, it is a potential commercial property. And the DDA is, that's our role, is revitalization and development.
Okay. You're also picking up Carlisle.
Yes, sir. Everything in between Moreland and LaGrange Street, we're picking everything, because they weren't in there either.
Post office, Carlisle.
No, it was a very tortured map.
Okay, we can have the discussion if we get a motion and a second. Can I have a motion to accept the resolution to expand the Downtown Development Authority?
So moved.
Second? Do I have a second? Okay, they like it the way it is, Patty. I'm sorry.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your efforts.
I'd like to make a comment. I'd like to say that...
You're welcome to.
That I would hope the next council considers this. There's a great opportunity, particularly at the mill. And I think that they have a legitimate opportunity to make things happen. An opportunity for resource funding and to get a bigger and better vision of what we can get accomplished down there at the mill. So I hope that the next council considers it.
And I agree. Thank you. All right. Employee Christmas bonus. My name's on here. The city employees have worked very hard all year. This is the request for approval for a Christmas bonus. The budget has five hundred dollars per employee in the budget for a bonus. And we're asking at this time, the council's being asked to consider a bonus for the employees. To be paid out when, if it's approved, Anya? Okay, all right. So Christmas bonus. Let's have a, pick a number. Let's have a motion and a second and start a discussion if we could.
I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and provide five hundred dollars per employee for a Christmas bonus as requested.
Okay, have a motion, provide five hundred dollars per employee out of budget for a Christmas bonus. Do I have a second?
That's in our budget.
It's in the budget. We put it in the budget. I heard an "I."
I just, I'm thinking about, I didn't see that in our budget. What did you say, Sarah?
Yes, sir. Yes. How much was the bonus asked to you? Four hundred? Four hundred. Do I have a second? And then we can have a discussion?
I'll second that.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. And I'm gonna give it to you, Mr. Cooks.
Again, I want to take this opportunity to thank our staff and all the partners. You guys have done a great job. Had a lot of issues you had to deal with, new people, new department heads, new CM, old CM. Done an excellent job. New software coming in. And it's been a year of turmoil with a lot of cases. You stood up well. I like your commitment. I think we've got a great set of employees here. You guys come to work. And so I would like at this time, at this time, to go ahead and commit to you guys and girls and ladies and old people to, to get the bonus because it's something we've done every year. It's in our budget, so I support it.
Further discussion? One question. We normally have a breaking point for new employees. What did we do last year?
I think it's less than a year.
Less than a year, we gave half?
That was in our salaries?
I'm pretty sure last year if someone had less than a year, they got half the bonus. And Mr. Cooks, Mr. Gomez, y'all made the motions. Do you, do you wanna have an adjustment for someone less than a year and a half, or you wanna go five hundred for everybody on payroll?
I think it should be half for somebody.
Mr. Cooks?
Yeah, let me ask you, so less than a half, so they had ninety days?
They get two fifty. Is that, is that right? That's what we did last year.
Is that what we left?
Yes, sir. We gave them that.
Can I get a job?
You can apply. Mr. Garcia? Consider his application the same way you would anyone else. He's gonna be out of work December thirty-third. Okay. All right, further discussion?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to put a cap on this Christmas bonus to the other employees. Because when I first came home council, I think we were giving them about two hundred. Eight years ago, and now we have four or five hundred. We need to put a cap on this because every year we seem to be going up there. So I think we should cap this. Now, the maximum should be five hundred. I don't think we should go any higher than that. I won't be there next year, but, you know, I know these people are doing a good job. And I appreciate the job they're doing. But I just think we should cap this.
Well, when we're finished with this, you're certainly welcome to make that motion. That's not on the table right now. Further discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second to give a Christmas bonus to all employees over one year of five hundred dollars. Employees less than a year, two hundred and fifty dollars. All in favor?
Aye.
Are you unanimous? And you're welcome to make a motion, Mr. Lundie.
Ah, yes, Mr. Mayor, the council, I would like to make a motion that we put a cap on this at five hundred to, to no more than five hundred dollars to the city employees for a Christmas bonus.
If I might address that?
Please do.
That's, that would be a motion that would be binding on a future council and would not be permissible under state law.
Okay. Appreciate your concern, Mr. Lundie. We're gonna move forward. All right, well, that's why we have council. All right, let's go to walking trails. Can I have, Mr. Bemis? Mr. Bemis?
Yes.
Mr. Bemis. We've worked very hard, we being, me kicking Mr. Venus, Bemis in the shins, to get on the county. What I've learned, what I've learned in the last four years, one thing I've learned, I should say, in the last four years, we pay full county taxes. And we ought to be after the county politely, asking for, asking for more than we ask for. We provide our own police, police department service. The county doesn't have to do that. We've got code enforcement, and Tim's doing an outstanding job. That saves the county a lot of money, and we still pay the county full taxes. So we've been after Mr. Fouts and the county commission. We went up to meet with him, and Mr. Bemis has worked hard on this. And I'd like you to tell us where we are.
Basically, what you have in front of you is a intergovernmental agreement between the county and the city of Grantville, which will agree to, for the county to come in and establish the trail. And when they do that, they will come in and do any and all of the labor. And Grantville will be responsible for just the materials, which saves us a great deal of money. And that means that the county is working with us to complete the trails. I wasn't anticipating this, so otherwise I'd have been prepared.
You know, Royce, you worked very hard on this, and you've driven me crazy, too. So it, I appreciate you explaining it. And we're looking at around four thousand dollars, aren't we?
Approximately, it's material costs, and we'll probably get the money, or we'll get the county's cost for any and all materials. And they want us to get started on this. Basically, what it was is it was in the plans to begin with, and something happened, and it went afoul. And so all it took was just a couple of phone calls to get them back down here to decide what was gonna happen and to walk the areas that you see on the maps. And to go back and discuss it, and, you know, and that was it. So they wanted, they wanted to work with us on it.
And the county's gonna build it, and the county's gonna maintain it?
Yes, according to the agreement.
This is great. I mean, I've been talking to Alicia and Lynn and the people with the ball fields. And these mothers and these families that come out with their children for the ball field, they, they really would like to see something like this. And now all of our citizens can park there in that big parking lot and get out and hike these trails. We've got just under a mile. It's over half a mile going around the ball field, and then point four, almost four tenths of a mile going around the, going around the parking lot, so.
Do those ballpark lights stay on all the time, or?
At night, I doubt it. I don't know. Tim, chief, chief?
They turn off at night.
They turn off at night, yeah, yeah. It would be a waste of electricity. But, you know, we're talking about daytime.
How we, how the signs up or?
The signs are up when they...
I mean, I mean, for nighttime, not being in, not secure.
Those lines are up. The park closes, it's dark. Yeah, Tim, doesn't the park close at dark? Isn't there a sign saying that?
Yes.
Yeah, and it also says there's walking trails.
Yeah, no, I never got around to sightseeing now.
Yeah.
So what kind of timeframe are we looking?
Sightseeing season.
Timeframes that are to be discussed with the county. Michael Fouts, who's the county manager, has worked very, very closely with us on this. Tim Laster has worked very closely with us on this and trying to get it completed. And everybody's been extremely farmed, they've been working.
You reminded Mr. Laster, we had not seen him in Grantville yet.
Mr. Laster likes to come back down to Grantville now.
Yes.
Now, these are all gonna be like four feet wide, five blocks?
Uh, enough for, yeah, it should be about four feet, four to six feet wide. It's gonna be compressed.
Ten feet wide?
Ten feet wide.
Is this concrete or macadam?
It's gonna, no, it's gonna be M-ten, crushed M-ten.
So pushing a stroller on that?
Won't have any problems. It'll pack now.
Yeah.
It's not gonna be gravel.
Yeah.
Gravel, you have trouble with, but this is gonna be packed, M-ten will compress and make it nice.
Like crushing run?
Yeah. No, not crushing run. Crushing run is just too bumpy.
So going through the parking lot thing, it's just gonna be designated for a walking area?
Yeah, just, we just cross the parking lot where we have to. They'll be, they should be crossed, they should put crosswalks there.
Okay. For the safety reasons, you got people wanting to have a library, and if there's people out walking during the summer and stuff, I don't want to see any, and there's a lot of activities at ballpark.
Right, yeah.
People out walking.
I'm sure that most of the activity is gonna go around the ball field. You've gone around the ball field twice, you've covered more than a mile.
You have.
You've covered about one?
About a mile, almost a mile and a half.
Yeah, and you've never bothered the parking lot or the library or?
No, you, you just go all the way around the walking, around the ballpark and the cross, say, on the grass most of the time. You just have two or three places to cross and get on and to pop it through, through way.
Great, thank you. Don't go anywhere. Any further questions for Mr. Bemis? Could you sit down, sir?
Thank you.
Okay, we have an intergovernmental agreement from the county, providing a ten-foot wide walking trail. They'll do the labor. They'll put in the trail. We'll pay for the material. Do I have a motion to accept the agreement and allow the mayor to sign it?
So moved.
Second? Discussion?
Four thousand dollars you're looking at, where we're going. Will we pull that out of any spot?
I suspect we can pull it out of recreation.
Further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Well done, Mr. Bemis, Mr. Bemis. With the new council, would you please go to the county and try to get some batting cages for the ball field?
Be more than happy to.
I'm sorry?
Be more than happy to.
Thank you. That's your next assignment, and work with the new council.
I'll email Michael tomorrow.
Yeah, okay. Folks?
Good to have great volunteers like you.
Thank you. He works, he's very tenacious when you get him the tour, I tell you.
Great.
He's annoying. I mean, he's tenacious. Okay, next on there is a chief of police contract, Mr. Cooks.
Yes, sir. I would like to take this opportunity to, again, request, when I made a motion to accept him to be our chief of police, I had requested the council to pay him fifty thousand dollars on salary. Typically, what I understand, at that time, we did not have, people were getting overtime, still working overtime, even though we were giving them salary pay at our management level position. I think we end up giving him, what was it, forty? Forty-seven thousand. And to include overtime pay. I would say that chief did, on his own, decide not to take the overtime and take the salary of forty-seven thousand dollars. Somebody changed the numbers, forty-seven five, forty-seven thousand. At that time, I thought that that was unfair. Should have been giving him fifty thousand because of his experience. Our current chief at that time had no experience, and other than twenty-four months, I think, where he had been interim and or chief at our situation, and he was making fifty thousand. So now, I'm now requesting, again, based on the success that he's had in providing community policing, doing an outstanding job, and police officers are doing an outstanding job of getting out and being a part of the community, being active in our community. I mean, he's got slogans on the, on the cars, trying to continue the effort of understanding that they're a part of the community. They're not separate from the community. He's also purchased several vehicles, outstanding vehicles that we have for five hundred dollars a piece. I mean, it's great contribution to our budget and a great contribution to their needs. Diversified the staff. I think we have a female, it's, is she a lieutenant now? Is she lieutenant? Uh, so, I mean, that's, those are kinda things that I, I look at in terms of, uh, the performance of the staff, uh, the performance of, uh, of the employment, uh, the dedication to understanding that we have a budget that, uh, needs to, uh, have needs. We do need vehicles for our police officers and he was able to bring, put, bring vehicles in here, not thirty thousand dollars, but five hundred dollars a piece. I think that, those things are very important. So he's showing me that, uh, knowing that he deserved the fifty thousand dollars I requested in the first place, probably deserves more. So I'm requesting, uh, making a motion that we give him a contract for fifty thousand dollars with an option, uh, for a second year for his contract.
Uh, you're, okay, you're asking for a one-year contract? I, I don't know how to do it.
What, what I would suggest is that you, if you wanna have a contract, that it be, uh, simply a contract for an at-will term that maintains his at-will employment status, but provides that if the council terminates him for any reason other than for cause, which would be, that term would be defined in the contract, that he would be paid some severance amount for some period of time.
A one-year contract?
Not, not any particular timeframe, but just simply, that if at any point the council terminates him for any reason other than for cause, that it would be, uh, there would be a severance.
That's different than what we did previous.
That's right.
Why, why are we doing this?
I, I think this is a, a better method going forward, uh, to-
Mr. Cooks, it's your motion.
Go ahead, Mark.
I, I think it's a better method going forward so as to not provide or lock into any specific time period. It, it gives the council, uh, the latitude of maintaining an at-will employment relationship, but still provides the protection to the employee that if he is terminated for any reason other than for cause, that there would be a payment of some severance there, which is essentially the same thing that the other contract, uh, accomplished, but this way doesn't have a specific term and may not, uh, run into any issues as it relates again to binding future councils and so forth.
Okay, uh, Mr.-
Well, the, the binding of the contract, the severance would be binding.
The severance would be, but the, he's saying the length of term.
No, no particular term, right.
In other words, if he, if, yeah. All right, I, I understand what you're saying, uh, but it's your motion, Mr. Cooks.
I would like to make, uh, change the motion to, uh, if, uh, a contract for fifty thousand dollars with a six-month severance.
The, how about thirty days notice and a five-month severance? You, you gotta do notice in there somewhere. All right, well, you got, you, okay, I'm sorry. Motion will go from there.
I'd like to take, I'd like to, uh, change my, uh, motion to a, for a, uh, fifty thousand dollar salary. Con, not contract, uh, annual salary, uh, with a, uh, six-month sal, uh, severance pay, uh, agreement attached to it.
All right, council, are we okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I have a, I have a motion to give Mr. Garcia a six-month chief of police con, I'm sorry. I have, you know, you go once too long.
I know.
I'm sorry. All right, let me, let me regroup. It's my fault.
Yeah.
It's my fault.
I know.
Uh, I have a motion to give Mr. Garcia a chief of police contract with a salary of fifty thousand dollars a year and a six-month severance if he's terminated.
For any reason other than for cause.
For any reason other than for cause. Do I have a second?
Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to give Mr. Garcia a contract for fifty thousand dollars a year and a six-month severance if he's terminated for anything without cause. Discussion? You first, Mr. Cooks? I think you probably do this one a little shorter.
Yeah, again, uh, just to confirm, uh, the, uh, the only other option we would have is to have, uh, how many days you need to have a notice? Have you?
None, none.
Yeah, I don't think you wanna provide that.
Okay.
No, you, no, we're good.
Okay.
Yeah, you're good now.
All right.
My problem is, is we never offer anybody else with a six-month contingency of pay.
That's correct.
And that is, to me, is ridiculous. I mean, we've already had, you can see Matt, he don't even go work three months.
Uh, he went four.
Well, he himself.
But he has, but he has a year of contract.
Yeah, and no police officer or chief has had a contract, a yearly contract. Has there ever been one?
No, not that I know of.
This would be new?
Yeah, and I, I don't see this. This is not, they're just changing the whole rules.
Okay.
And I'm totally disagree with, it's such a long period of time.
Okay.
And, uh, I just locked the city into a financial bind again if there's something else that occurs.
Okay.
Well, I would disagree with that.
Further, further, wait, let's, let's get somebody else a chance. You will get, you will get a chance to speak again. Uh, further discussion, Mr. Gomez, Lundy?
Yeah, I, I, I disagree with that too as well. I don't wanna get in a fine contract like that, six months, um, if we decide to, whatever reason. I, I just think that's a lot of money for the city, uh, to pay out from like that. Um, I, I don't know where they do the, the new, uh, not the employment, they can do six months of this. I just, I disagree with that. I don't, I don't wanna do that.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez.
I would recommend thirty days.
Well, that's not on the table. You, if this fails, you, if this fails-
We're discussing right now and that's what we're discussing. We're discussing the whole thing.
You need to be recognized by the chair. I, I, I'm gonna let you speak, but let me, let me go back to Mr. Cooks first. We go, we go one for, one against. You'll have a chance. Go ahead, Mr. Cooks.
So, it appears that the problem is, is that, uh, you think you, there's an op, there's a, you think there may be a situation where cause may not be there and then you would have to pay him that. Is that what you're saying? Is that what we're saying now?
No, I'm just saying, I don't wanna get in a, a situation like that, no matter what reason is, for six months regardless of what it is. I just don't, uh, do that.
So, if, if, Mr. Attorney, Mark, could you explain to me what cause would be when you make a-
Well, you know, looking at, as an example, the, uh, previous contract the city manager had, cause is something along the lines of willful, knowing, grossly negligent or negligent breach or disregard of a provision of the agreement, uh, misconduct involving an act of moral turpitude, criminal illegality, uh, willful misapplication or misuse of public funds, engaging in conduct that could be expected to bring the city into substantial public disgrace or disrepute, failing to observe city policies, all of those things would be cause.
And at that point, if that caused, he would not receive severance? That's correct. I think that's, I think that's reasonable.
Thank you, Mr. Olick. I know he's done.
Okay.
I would like to give you-
Like I said, I, you know, we don't even go that long of a term, even for city manager. And I don't see any point of locking the city into any long-term severance package whatsoever for any position.
Thank you. Uh, I, I'd like to add, the nice thing here, the good thing here is we have, Mr. Garcia has been here for ninety days. We know what we're buying and I can't say enough good things about what he's done for the city. And he's, he's stepped forward daily to come out and get things done. He has vision. Uh, I have to admit, I've been against spending a dime on this auditorium. Nobody had a vision, they just wanted to spend money. Now, I'm all for everything he's talking about because he's, he's getting things done over here. He's working downtown. The downtown looks much better. And, uh, he's proved himself. We're not taking a, we're, we're not taking the big and the pole. We know, we know who, we, we've been dating for three months. We're, we're now, we're now wanting to have a committed relationship. And he's proved himself and I think that's the direction we oughta go too. Further comment? Okay, I have a motion and a second to give Mr. Garcia a contract as chief of police for fifty thousand dollars with a six-month severance if he's terminated for any reason other than cause. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. I, I have two in favor, none opposed?
Two. On the opposed.
Opposed? Okay, I'll break the tie in favor of Mr. Garcia's contract. All right, let's go to-
Can we keep together?
I'll handle that. I'll handle it. You, I, we'll take care of it. We'll take care of it. Council approves. Uh, I, I can't immediately give you time, but it will be quick. Okay? Do you have any citizens' comments? All right, we'll go to Mr. Councilman comments, Mr. Cooks?
None.
Mr. Gomez?
Uh, yes, I wanna thank all the citizens for showing up tonight. It's a pleasure to see your, your beautiful faces out there. Um, also, we wanna remind everybody about the winter wonderland Christmas parade coming up, uh, December the sixth at five P M. So, we'd like to see everybody there, be great. I think it's fun to get community together and come out and have some fun. Okay?
Where would I be?
There's, uh, at the splash bar.
Okay. Mr. Olick?
Thank you for all coming tonight and, uh, I guess we have one more meeting to go and, uh, it'll be the end of the year and I want everybody to have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Mr. Lundy?
Mayor, this is one of the few times that I'm gonna agree with you. I've sat on this seat for eight years and I've been sitting here arguing with people for, I mean, I mean, some serious arguments you and I have had, but I'm gonna have to agree with you in your assessment of Chief Garcia. I think he's done an outstanding job since he's been here. For what he had to work with and all the opposition and all this turmoil that's going on here in this town. I think he has done an excellent job as it relates to trying to refurbish that auditorium out there to make something positive, have a place where we can convene, uh, cultural center, whatever use we're gonna make out of that thing. In this building here, the front of it, the facade, I'm impressed. You've done a good job, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, Mr. Garcia?
I just wanna, I just want to, uh, speak to the council about some of the projects that we have done. Uh, I asked, uh, Mr. Owens to give me a breakdown of what the utilities and public works department does. He gave me a three-page item of what his department does. Anybody that's interested in seeing it, I'd be more than happy to do that for them. We have purchased fifty, fifty or so bricks for, uh, how many bricks have we purchased?
I, I just sent in, um, an order for twenty-one, to complete what-
Of complete, so we got, so we got a total of seventy-one bricks now. We ordered fifty behind there.
Yes, yes.
We got seventy-one bricks and we've ordered for the downtown, uh, Main Street. Uh, we also, uh, Dean, Mr. Dean's been working diligently to get the gazebo done. We've got rocking chairs in there now. I think all that's left now is to get the, uh, gazebo, uh, anchored down and the roof shingles put in place. The front of city hall, I had a citizen call me, uh, it's Ractus, it's Brenda Ractus, and she made me aware of the condition of the front of city hall, at which time I immediately took it, took it and, uh, we've remediated the front of city hall. We painted the steps, uh, we painted the rails and we fixed boards that had been broken for years and fallen on the ground. We replaced them, put them back up and painted the front, the side of city hall because that is our building and we have to be responsible for it to look good. Do the citizens come in here and paint? Their utility bill and they go through a building that hasn't been painted for probably ten years. So we're, uh, we're getting that update. The front doors are gonna be painted here this week. Also, the utility billing has been completed. Uh, the master meter had, had linked up with our computer system and was able to transfer the information correctly. So I think we got the master meter, uh, situation resolved with our utility building. And I had a meeting with the Art Institute of Atlanta today and they're gonna do a marketing video at no cost to the city. Uh, most marketing videos cost twelve thousand dollars. I got the Art Institute to promise me that they were gonna do us a marketing video so we can market the city for free.
Excellent. Over there?
Um, yes, sir. Time's up.
Thank you. Uh, my, my turn. I'm happy Thanksgiving. I, I'm excited, I'm so excited about those walking trails. I know I need to exercise and, and I, I've walked the streets of Grantville and, you know, this new council needs to work on these sidewalks, okay? But, uh, the walking trails, I'm heading to the walking trails when they're finished, all right? Cause I have tripped a time or two on these sidewalks. Uh, also, the seniors, the seniors have this new gazebo out here. Thank you, Mr. Tim Dean, for all your hard work and whoever, whoever was involved in that. I, I just, I just know I approved it, I didn't do anything else. So, we've got a great, we've got a great city staff. I'd like to thank the council for giving them a decent bonus to help them get through Christmas. They've certainly, they've certainly worked hard for the city this year and, uh, we appreciate it. And that's all I have. You folks have a happy Thanksgiving. We'll see you the second Monday, eighth of December. You have a motion, uh, creating a motion to adjourn? Do you have a motion?
I thought we were gonna go for executive session.
Somebody has to make a motion besides me.
Make a motion for executive session, personnel?
Okay, motion to go into executive session for personnel. Do we have a second?
A second.
Motion, a second, to go into executive session for personnel, all in favor?
What, what is it, uh?
Personnel?
Personnel, is it?
Personnel. That's all you can say, is personnel? Personnel. All right, motion and a second, go into executive session, personnel. All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous? We are adjourned. Motion to adjourn? No, we did that. We're gonna go in session.